Okay, are there any amendments to the agenda? We have two privileges on the floor. One is on any item that's in the agenda itself. And then, at the end, we have one where anybody can talk about anything they want to talk about. So, does anybody have something they would like to talk about relative to the agenda?
Is there a problem on the agenda?
No, no. I'm taking a copy of the agenda.
A dollar a piece, Jack.
What?
A dollar a piece.
Yeah, right. Put it on my water bill.
Okay.
Okay. Under our business, let me recap what's occurred in the last 24 hours in regard to rain in the town of Ocean. On Monday, Sunday and Monday of last week, we had several roads that were closed due to flooding. We had a considerable amount of damage due to culvert and erosion and things of that But last week, for example, Birlen Road was closed two days due to a culvert that was washed out. Reservoir Road, two days, to a culvert that was partially washed out. Owens Road, eight hours, to a culvert that was washed out. And so forth and so on. And then we got down into roads that were damaged. Conflint Town Road had serious erosion. In fact, it took 200 tons of stone to fill in the hole. And layman terms, that's about 20 truckloads. Clark Road had serious erosion. Lakeville Road, Lakeview Road, Hartley Road, all with erosion. And then we had roads that were closed due to flooding. Indiana Road was closed -- Jerry, I can give you a copy of this if you want. Indiana Road was closed four days. Celery Avenue, four days. Big Island Road, four days. Harriman Drive, two days. Chichump Road, one day. Fletcher Street by Burke, one day. Echo Lake, four days. And then 17A was repeated closures for four days. Hamilton Park Sewer Pump Station couldn't keep up with the volume of sewage and ionized gas. We reported to the DEC and a spill report number was given. Arcadia Hill Sewer Pump Station could not keep up with the volume of sewage and inflow. It also overflowed in the DEC. We filed with them and got a number. Arcadia Hill Well House, number is for wells 21, 22, and 23, was overcome by floodwater, causing damage to the electric control system and the building. The building may have to be condemned, we don't know. But just the electric control panel is $7,500 to replace that at Arcadia Hill. Both of the Arcadia Hills access roads and security fences were seriously damaged. Basically, will have to be replaced. Several homes are damaged in flooded areas. Meadowbrook Lane, Gumwood Drive, Celery Avenue. One home there is serious, serious damage. Foundation pushed in, etc. House off the foundation. Indiana Road and 182 South Street, it also had serious damage. The front of the foundation was pushed in with hydraulic pressure. And then we had just a numberable homes with water in basements that were flooded and needed to be pumped out by the fire department or whatever. And I don't know that number, but it was dozens and dozens. So today, now we've got 11 inches of rain Sunday night in about six hours. And we were scheduled to get between eight and -- six and eight inches last night. I don't know how many we had. By on YNN, the Village of Ocean's on the front page and the lead story for the flooding in the Village down by the Synovus Station. But anyway, I think we probably got another five inches last night. So, in essence, we've probably got 16 inches of rain in the past seven days. But everything that we worked on on Monday and Tuesday last week has been undone. Reservoir Road, the erosion we had, the culvert that was exposed, had to be redone again today.
Excuse me, boss, do you have a text message?
Echo Lake Road today was flooded and had to be closed. Harriman Drive flooded and had to be closed. The significance of that flood is, is that it isolates Glen Arden. And we have a senior population living in Glen Arden, so you have a real problem, can't get to them. And remember, last time I said it was closed for two days. 17A today was flooded and many places are in and out, up by the quarry, down where I live, a lot of water. So, anyway, things did not -- we got another five inches, I do believe, when it's all settled, done. Before coming to this meeting tonight to show the relativity of things, in Pennsylvania and Upper New York State, if we speak, there are 100,000 people being evacuated due to This is -- I want to give you the relativity of what we've experienced. In the town of Ocean, we have what they call the 100-year flood, and we use that for designing roads and bridges and culverts. And once every 100 years, we're supposed to experience seven inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And the first storm was 11 inches of rain in six hours. You throw five more last night, that's 16 inches of rain. That's 225% more rain than you would expect in a 100-year flood. And it shows. This afternoon, for example, at 3 o'clock, the county executive announced that they're going to close the county government's center. And for an indefinite period of time. The phones that we have in this building, because of mold, water, etc. This building had flooded the basement, it's still there. It's probably got fecal material in it, and we're going to have to have it checked before we can pump it out. And see what -- so, it's everywhere. It is everywhere. We have serious, serious problems. So, with that, that's the result to the last 24 hours, but I'll also kind of recap for this past week. The Department of Public Works, which is their primary responsibility for the maintenance of roads, they're working 16-hour days to try to get the roads safe for school buses because school opened this week. That is the primary focus. And again, everything they did early last week has been undone this past, or a good deal of it. So, with that, the next item on the agenda is, I've asked the assessor to review the current status of the property reeval project going on in the town. Joanne?
Diane, is your executive one?
You're there.
Yeah, I see.
You're okay?
Sorry.
Mine is better. Good.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what the -- Lou just reminded me that --
And residential.
Yeah, individuals up to now have been able to contact FEMA, and they've got programs that if you're small --
Turn this thing off.
I thought I turned this off.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
At least you have service.
That's true. We were without telephone service all week, last week, and I was working out of the police department. But anyway, this afternoon, we were told that FEMA is, or the federal government's now declared us a Orange County, a federal disaster area, and so municipalities can also collect on the money that we are spending. And then I hope that works out for the water and sewer districts because the amount of damage that's there as well is significant. Okay, Gillian.
All right, well, our consultant was in. We did print off the Village reevaluation comps and subjects. All the land values have been created. We're right on target. I went out just for a few hours on one day just to get the feel, because you have to kind of build up the momentum when you're out there. I went out and checked the sales and then started to go around, you know, in the Village. Then yesterday, I went out for pretty much a full day. And we've got quite a bit done, so just in a day and a few hours, we've got almost 250 parcels done. Today, I was in because of, obviously, road conditions, and I was working on the townhouses and paddock. So, I pretty much have those done, other than I have to, you know, go out in the field and take a look at them. Because we are driving in front of each and every parcel out there. So that, you know, even though we have photos of everything, I want to physically see everything. So, we're right on target.
Now, the goal date is December 31st. Do they have it all done, and in the computer?
No.
No, I understand you got to have your tentative roll in March, isn't it?
May.
Or May?
May 1st is the tentative roll.
Okay. But, so we don't get put winged and something else happen? Your expectation is that we can have this done by the end of the year?
Well, I'm hoping that all the values are done, yes, by the end of the year, because in February, we'll be sending out our notices to all the homeowners so that they can come in and look what we used for comps and, you know, sort of be a, what we'll call pre-agreement, that people can come in and look everything over.
Okay. The target is before the rolls close that you will have this completely done?
Oh, sure.
By 2012, so...
May 1st, 2012 is my tentative roll.
Right.
So, it certainly has to be done long before then.
Long before then. So, what is your target date for total completion?
Probably these Janu, or sometime.
Okay. So, you went too far. January 1st.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, those are the four.
I mean, along with that, you know, if you please, and I'm along with that, you know, I have all the scars to deal with.
Of course.
There's a lot of stuff to deal with besides...
Now, I did talk to John McCary of Real Time Property in that county, and he said that he might be able to send two more people over here for a couple of weeks. I don't know what kind of people or what they'd be doing, but whatever.
Which, I mean, even just one person, you really need two people out in the field. Just that simple. One person to drive, the other person to man the book, and that's what basically I do, and look at the values, look at the sales, and be able to come up with the value of each parcel.
Right.
So, you know, there really has to be two people out there. I took Lisa out with me yesterday, and then Lisa and I had gone out, you know, just worked a couple hours the day before. Then I wanted to come back in and check some sales, out through multiple listings, what was on the market, what's sold, you know, plus the deeps that we had coming in, just to make sure my brain was working right.
We're focusing on the Village, the town is done, is that correct?
The town hasn't been started yet. But the printing of it has been, but the reviewing of the town has not. I just started the Village. There are about 1,300 and change residential properties in the Village. So, in a day and a few hours, we got, you know, around 250 done. Then, you know, I should be able to get it done in a snap if it stops raining and flooding.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Can I have it there?
Here, please.
You know, Joanne, whether it's December 31st, or January 1st, or whatever the date is, 31st, that's, you know, I mean, as long as we can hit that date of May, right, is really the most important thing, right?
That's correct.
Now, my question to you is this, and I guess it's a difficult question, but the reason why we're spending all of this time and effort on this is because we're actually getting killed by scar hearings and by certs.
Correct. Correct.
So, now, we have this new nifty-difty evaluation process, assessment process, in line. What do you think that's going to do for us as far as cutting back on all of these certs and the scar hearings?
One, I think the public will better understand because it's market value. They'll be able to look at it, they won't need all these companies, they'll be able to look and say, "Well, yeah, okay, I agree, my house is worth 300 or 350," or it isn't. They'll be able to come in and take a look at all the sales that we have, and be able to make that judgment. So, and also, when you go to the hearing, our equalization rate's 100.
Right.
Here's the market value, here are all my sales. It's going to be much easier to defend.
Right. You don't have to play position.
So, there should be a significant decrease in the amount of hearings that we have to appear now and defend as we have them.
I certainly hope so. I mean, the first year, you may have more because everybody gets a little excited when they see a new value on their home.
Right.
So, you might get more people or more, you know, rushing to sign up with companies or whatever, but it's going to be much easier to defend.
Thank you.
Okay. You had a question?
No, so, but...
Okay, very good. Diane, have a say here to Joanne. Okay, the next item is, is discussed the current information regarding liability insurance for two underground fuel tanks. George, could you bring us up to speed on this?
Yes, I can. Okay, as of Tuesday night, we were still in this dilemma of whether or not we should purchase the insurance for two underground tanks. It's a specialty insurance because no one wants to insure environmental hazards with tanks. So, you have to go to a specialty company, as you know already. So, the insurance company that we actually own, this was the only one we could get a call from, was the UCTC, UCPM, excuse me. And Greg Townsend, who was our broker, said they are connected with Liberty Insurance Company. What I was asked to do was, we had, if you remember correctly, we had, we were going to insure the two underground tanks. What I was asked to do as of Tuesday was, find out more information, and you have a packet in your family. Turn to the page which has LIU Specialty Insurance Agency. I hope you have that page. Oh, yeah. Okay. This kind of gives you the rundown, and then I have some other notes that I want to pass on to you. First of all, the insurance company is a non-admitted carrier, and so you cannot get any money from the solvency fund. But that isn't, you're not going to get any insurance that is a person who's an carrier that's going to mature. There is no tail coverage for this. So, let's say we discuss tonight, then we call tomorrow, as of, say, the 10th of September. And so, we don't have insurance from the time when it ended to the 10th. So, it starts the day that we decide to do it. The information that's probably most important to you is under limits of liability. That's what you asked me to get into. So, limits of liability are $1 million for each incident and $2 million aggregate limit, which means if you had 10 spills during the course of the time, the most they would pay out is $2 million. A little quirk in this is what's beneath it, and I didn't understand what that meant, but I'll explain to you now. 250,000 aggregate claims expense limit. That means attorney's fees, engineering fees, environmental fees, that have to be spent to defend the case. So, that, you can only get $250,000 out of them for that each year.
Is that in addition to the one day? Or is that part of the year?
No, I think it's part of it.
Okay.
Part of it. As we discussed Tuesday, there's a $10,000 deductible, and the premium is roughly, for these two things, is $3,500. I think that's what's the first page, yeah. $3,514. So, as Phil said Tuesday night, you know, before we get the first dollar of defense, we have to have bills totaling $10,315, $3,000, $13,514.
Right.
So, that's the effect. And this is not covered, we have no umbrella coverage over this, like our umbrella coverage carries that. And I think that basically does it. Oh, so, I finally asked Greg, I said, "Greg," this Greg Townsend is our agent that we did this, "Should we take this insurance?"
Yeah.
So, as he said to me, and, you know, we kind of laughed about it, but it's not a laughing matter if it happens, is that if you have a spill, you should have took the insurance. If you don't have a spill, then of course, you know, you spent $3,514 and you could have saved it. So, that's the dilemma. But I said, I pressed him, and I said, "Greg, what's your best professional opinion?" And he said, "Due to your experience, I would take the insurance." And that brings you up to date, okay?
Now, the tail coverage, I'm just a little confused. I thought tail coverage was when this expires, if you go into another insurance company, they will not honor the claims that have happened during the period if you did not file that claim. In other words, we find out that something had happened during the claim policy, but we're with a new company now, so what they're saying is, you didn't file, there's no tail coverage. Or anything from before, if there were any existing problems, which we didn't have.
Well, we had a, with Zurich, we had an occurrence policy through the end of the year.
Right.
Now, from January 1 through the time now, there's no coverage. There's no tail coverage at all. Sometimes insurance companies will offer that to you because you have a fair period.
Right.
They will.
Okay. Well, here's a dilemma. We know we have double-wall tanks with electronic centering system in between. So, the likelihood of us having a leak that gets to the soil causing problems slim to none. The problem is, you can have a neighbor that has a leak, as we experienced here, and it gets in the soil, and then if you're adjacent to it, people sue you anyway. And that's what's happened. We didn't create the problem. We'll be defended, but if our insurance company, the Zurich, is picking up that cost, I don't know how much that is. I mean, that's the situation we're currently in. We know we did not have a leak. We did all the soil borons and everything else to vindicate ourselves. Right. We know that a neighbor had 40,000 parts per billion in the soil versus the limit of 10 parts per billion is the standard. So, the very fact that we're a municipality, we have, that people think we have deep pockets, I mean, that's the, for $3,000, we're getting coverage about, not our performance as much as what can happen. I don't know, it's just I'm putting that in the table, because that's the real world we're living in today.
And what was in 2006, which is covered by the Zurich policy?
Zurich, right.
There was $37,000 that only we had.
In 2006?
Right.
On the MTB spill? Right, right. But also, then we spent another $35,000, whatever it is, on engineering fees and trying to, and so all total, we sent this off to the state to be reimbursed by the Finance Department, the Comptorres Office. We may never get it based on them not having any money. But that is, it's not our fault, and they subrogate. In other words, if they pay us instead of, will they pay the claim if they can't subrogate?
Not necessarily.
That's what I mean. That's what I'm afraid of, is we may not be covered. If they can't subrogate, then it's someone else's fault.
Yeah, you're naked, basically.
Okay. That's another consideration that we have to really think about, so...
I just don't know about the engineering references and our analysis of this location and the possibility for, again, a neighboring spill, if you will, or detonation. Aren't these somewhat isolated?
Wouldn't that go on with the other reeval policies?
Arguably.
Because it has nothing to do with the tanks and somebody else.
See, the MTB situation, by definition, you know, the geography was such that, you know, we were exposed. In this instance, these are isolated tanks, so...
We have two tanks, we have two tanks and the dispensing mechanism is all, they are electronically controlled. And we have two tanks, one inside each other with an electronic sensor. So, if you get hydrocarbons in between the two tanks, sends off an alarm with Broderick's office. Never had that. These are fiberglass tanks, I mean, they should last a long, long time. I think the coverage is for our tanks. If there's mishap in our tanks, then they would cover it. If it's someone else's tanks, that's what I'm talking about. They would not cover it and subrogate. They would not, they're just covering our tanks. The other thing you probably have to look at is, okay, we have a number of safeguards. Is there any foolproof situation where we can put burns, or I forget what they call those, catch basins, as a triple insurance against it not leaking because we're up for the first $13,000? You've got the $10,000 deductible, the $3,000 premium of any spill, and if it does not go into the ground or whatever, but, you know, I mean... I mean, the fact is, we could have, literally have a spill dispensing fuel in the vehicle, but someone's off attending to something else, and the thing sticks, and there you go. Yep. On any tank. On any tank. Right. You know what we ought to do before we make a decision on this? We ought to really talk to Broderick. Yep. He's a mechanical engineer, and I know he's got a lot of experience with tanks. You know, we ought to get his input.
I got it.
Okay. We'll put it on the next work session. Yeah, nice work, Greg. Yep. You know, nothing is simple. Okay, new business.
I wasn't...
Really, for George and Phil and, I guess, Dennis, you, if you want attendance, Orrin Pratt of Complines and Howard Bittner. They're going to be here in Town Hall to work to discuss working with Com issues. He's supposed to get back today, but it's either going to be 10 o'clock or 10:30 on Friday the 16th, so weekly tomorrow. I'll get back to you and clarify when that is.
I'll be there.
Okay. But I want to talk about...
I'll be there.
I'll be there. I want to talk about tail claims, and I want to talk about rates. And when the state takes over some of the disability claims that are pending right now. Right. When they, because there is a period, and we are just getting absolutely killed with some of the disability claims. Right. Okay, the next one is a kind of a unique request. Gary Tetz of Tetz Enterprises came into my office today. I actually talked to George and I, because George was there. They have the asphalt plant in Middletown up in, off of Cemetery Road. And East Main Street, last night flooded out again, adjacent to the hospital with Walk Hill. So, he can't get his trucks out. And it was a big job that the state of New York, he's got to get trucks, 40 trucks a day for Friday, Monday, and Tuesday. He doesn't know how fast the river's going to go down, but his dilemma is, is he's got a commitment to the state of New York for this asphalt. And the only way he can get out of there is through Cemetery Road, Owens Road, Chichump Road, and Hartley Road. And he asked if he could, in fact, bring those trucks over that road, and we suspend our limitation, because we have a limitation for no heavy trucks on those roads. And I said, "I'd bring it to the board, and we'd discuss it with our attorney, and find out what we can and can't do." But there's a lot at stake here, I mean, jobs and everything else, commitments, I guess. So, Dennis, what is the fact that we consider...
Assuming that the state has issued, you know, the proper proclamations as far as, you know, relief status and emergency status, we would be covered indirectly, claim-wise, for any damages that the trucks would do weight-wise to the road, in the event that they undermine the base or whatnot.
From whom's?
State funds, controllers office.
On local town roads, they would cover us?
Yes.
Would we get that type of assurance in writing from the state?
As I said to the supervisor, I'm not even sure what the state's done. Yeah, I agree, yes.
Because these will play, I mean, that, for those trucks, will just tear our roads apart.
Potentially, knowing the conditions and the status.
And the weight limits and so on and so forth.
You're talking 40 trucks a day.
Absolutely.
Forty coming out and forty coming back. And you're talking weight, you're talking phenomenal weight.
They would tear up our roads and our taxpayers would be saddled with the bill.
Initially, no question. I mean, then it would become a question of whether or not the relief funds would be available for reimbursement purposes.
Now, what he did say today is the governor today, help me out here if I heard this correctly, all government regulations and whatnot are set aside as a consequence of this emergency. And I don't, and that's why.
That bothers me.
Well, me too.
I don't know what that means.
I've never seen that in my lifetime.
And he would not have to fulfill, if he could not fulfill that contract and delay it for three days.
That's right.
Because of the emergency, I mean, in three days, he could cause millions of dollars worth of damage to us that we may not get paid for.
That's awesome.
So if they allow the extension or some grace period, then they should allow him that same thing on the state contract, I would say.
Yeah, in fact, I was surprised that was, I wasn't part of the request, but I was surprised that was the basis for the rationale for the request.
That he has to get these out in three days, he can't.
It's counterintuitive or almost logical. If in fact, everything's being suspended, why would his obligation under the contract?
Not be suspended.
Well, I think what it is, he's got asphalt and he's making, people making, he wants to get it out to the customers.
That's a private.
Oh, no, that's what's driving it. It's not any regulations or this or that or contracts. I'm sure that the state of New York, if he said, "I can't get it there," he's not going to be able to get it there.
What kind of bond could he post? Just for reassurance? We'd discuss maybe a bond in order, because if New York State doesn't pay and no one pays, you'll get fined by Monday, I know that. Well, I'm just asking, you know, I'm more, I'm protecting our taxpayers. We have been just pelted and beat to death with all of these things.
And think about it, all roads to be, those roads are not.
They're not here for that type of traffic.
That's why we have the wait long patience.
Absolutely. So anyway, I would need some insurance.
I'm knowing the locality, he has no location to go to, access road line.
That's rare.
No.
Which, you know, that's a tough situation also. You know, we talked about that hospital, we talked about his business.
Yeah.
Well, that thing is, when that river goes over that location, everybody's screwed.
Right, but that's also by property or is that they're taking consideration?
Oh, I just, no, no, I'm just talking about the hospital where they.
Oh, yeah?
Well, tomorrow is Friday, you've got Saturday and Sunday. I'm not sure how much traffic they would do on Saturday and Sunday.
No, no, they're not going to do it on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
It's Thursday, Friday, Monday and Tuesday.
Right, so by Monday and Tuesday, that.
And as soon as, well, see, I guess he was trying to build that a little comfort, but as soon as the road opens up, as soon as Cemetery is open, then he's not going to do it. So it might be like, say, Tuesday, one day, whatever it is, he doesn't need it anymore. He did it one day.
So it might be one day?
Might be one day.
So frankly, I have a problem with this too. I don't know about the rest of the board.
No, I, we need a backup insurance plan to make us whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wish I, to be honest, I wish I knew more about the state proclamation that said.
We can't be hanging out alone. Well, you know, we probably ought to contact him tonight too, so he can make plans for tomorrow.
Yeah, because if you think about it, let's say you had a tree fall and blocked the road, you'd be in a similar situation, and state not come to our assistance in that respect at any, and I honestly, I still don't know what the status is.
Yeah.
I have not seen any confusion with anything.
I need to get the boss any kind of bond, something to secure us that if whatever happens, because we're talking about a tremendous amount of volume of.
You know, is there a legal document we could prepare to have him sign, says, "Okay, in the event that this, they think you will make it good"?
Yeah, arguably, if you use an indemnification, the whole harmless we're in.
Right. I mean, in a way, I mean, here we're in a business of crises, because it's trying to grow.
I understand.
And you know, in that business where it's continuous, you know, you fire up your.
But what it bases me though, is again, I'm sure the board knows, I'm in that business.
Right.
And I can be very careful, I don't want to be biased in any way.
Right. Give us some expertise.
You make alternate arrangements and postponements, and I don't understand the urgency.
Right. Well, he came in about, what, 4 o'clock in the office?
Three, four o'clock.
So, I mean, we didn't have a whole lot, I just put the agenda tonight.
Understand, yeah. And there's no one here tonight, can you lighten the city further?
No, it's down here.
Oh, I mean.
I said I would bring it to the board.
Okay. Understandable, I just don't have a, because we're operating in some of the same conditions. I mean, think about the board, it's flooded on 17th, we can't even get to it in or out. And we just basically curtail and you cut back in your operations.
All right, let's do this then, and we've got some serious concerns here at the board. When we break between executive sessions and the end of the meeting, you and I will get them on the phone and talk to them.
Yeah, we need some more information, yeah.
Because I think that if we're going to say no, he needs to know it tonight, not tomorrow morning, I think.
Oh, yeah, fair, sure.
Kenny, you had a question?
Yeah, just a few years ago, on behalf of the residents, Cheech Chump on that area, we brought suit against the building of that plant. To protect the people out there. We lost it in court. And I can tell, I sat through a suit claim, there were many, many of those hearings up in Wok Hill.
Yes.
And for that reason.
We're not treated very kindly by Mr. Tetz or anybody else for that reason.
Like we told the league, more importantly, we joined the lawsuit, we lost it, and we joined the lawsuit to protect those roads out there.
Absolutely.
And I, in my set, on no condition legally, illegally, thank you very much, Mr. Tetz, but good luck.
Okay. What about the rest of the board?
I would tend to be more along the lines of if we could get a whole harmless and a, have enough protection for the roads, so if anything happened to them, we would be able to rectify that situation. The other side of the coin is, is you know, Goshen has always, has been criticized and continues to be criticized as anti-business, right? So when he came in, he had his plea, by the way, it's Goshen Police wound up at his door, I believe it was. He didn't know which officer it was, doesn't really matter, that, you know, you guys are going to be fined if you're going to be using these roads, but what you should do is go to the supervisor's office and see if anything can be done. So if we could be protected for the, you know, for the short period of time that he has to use it, I would have a tendency to go along with that. But I, you know, I also feel that, you know, we have to protect, and if we can't be protected, completely protecting the citizenry, then he has to make some other arrangements, as you're saying, Dennis, that he just has to curtail that operation for a couple of days.
And the other aspect of it is, aside from the whole harmless and the indemnification criteria, I would almost recommend to you that you have to have some sort of mandatory bond. And I wouldn't necessarily take a surety bond, you might, much like your asphalt or your cash.
Cash bond.
Yeah, because you're looking at a long prolonged process, God forbid should there be any sort of.
We have to pay to repair the roads immediately. And that's where the tax people.
Right, you have to front it.
And if there's any kind of discussion, any kind of, it'll be years before we can be reimbursed, and our people are carrying enough of a load. I mean, I'm just telling you, I feel very strongly about this. And secondly, I don't want to start a precedent.
Yeah.
Because if there's something wrong or I've got a problem here, we can use the local roads. It's a business decision, and at this particular point, that would be my business decision. Let's suppose it's a cash bond, so we know we could repair it immediately. But the urgency, I mean, three days, I'm really, I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, it's very, what project is he working on, you know?
Route 17.
Who's going to be?
Their asphalt, I think he said their asphalt, Route 17.
Are they, they're.
They, remember I said the, we had on Monday, I said they were.
It's going to be closed for two weeks.
That's what I'm saying.
Route 17, you're late.
Okay, Louis, what are your thoughts?
I'm going to give my thoughts.
Well, you go again.
My thoughts are, we need some protection.
But if you got the protection, would you be okay with it?
We're okay with it, yeah.
Okay.
But you've got to protect the citizens.
All right. Well, I think that between the meetings, we'll try to bring some additional information.
Yeah, good deal.
Thank you very much, Paul. Would someone can make a motion that we authorize the supervisor to pay a council payroll check run for 8/25/2011, amounting to $98,222.15?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All fairs say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would just like to make another comment before we leave that other issue.
Okay.
I don't think this has anything to do with being business friendly or not. We welcome business, we want to make sure, but they have to operate within the guidelines. Everyone expects that. And if there's going to be damage to any of our physical assets, I think we should be prudent and take a real quick look, hard look at what could happen. It's risk benefit, and it has nothing to do with us being business friendly or not. I don't want that to go out that way, right?
Okay.
I want to be, since I can't draw my memory, but I remember during those hearings, he said he had two access roads. Now, I think he just comes to Cheech Chump to take a shortcut, to get results on 17. He assured the people there was two access points. So what out of the cemetery, left, oh, we have another way out that way. That's my initial.
Okay, well.
Shortcut.
That's a good question.
Yeah, we will pursue this with him on the phone.
It's all to us, isn't it?
Oh, no, I mean, I don't want to jump on Walker's deal.
Yeah, that was, I don't want to interrupt, but Kenny's right. And the hearings anyway, people were very upset that truck traffic.
Sure. Well, I'm going to tell you, they said there's two access.
And he didn't say that there were two access, and it was contentious.
Well, we will proceed with it. Okay. Would someone can make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
No.
For me?
People might have jumped.
I was going to go.
We're listening to Paul. Because we're going to have him. I just want to, as a friendly reminder, I know we all, we will not remember, forget Sunday.
Yes.
The 10th anniversary of 9/11. We lost Goshen residents and many people here in Orange County as well as in New York City and Philadelphia. Just remember, 9/11, the county will have no celebration out of these, out of Orange County Park, if you can be out there.
What's that is then?
I believe it's 5 o'clock. Yeah, I was saying, I believe it's 4, 5 o'clock. You can make a touch on the public, but if not, just after the particular day, ironically, on Sunday, maybe church, you remember, a lot of people, a lot of memories in Goshen will last. That's all.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. All right, now we're open for a poll to the floor that anybody can talk about anything they'd like to talk about. But you'll need to use the mic, because it'll be recorded in the machine.
My neighbors have said that the old school first.
You've got to identify yourself, I'm sorry.
I'm going to make a statement. My neighbors have said that the oldest code first from here on. I am Janet Marchemich, and I live at 10 Meadow Brook Lane, formerly 8 Meadow Brook Lane, and have done so for 37 years. In all those years, I have never, ever experienced or witnessed what happened on Sunday, August 28th, in my yard and home. I had lakefront property. The water came into my home, into my finished basement, into my utility room, up to 18 inches high, according to the measurement of the FEMA inspector. It was, needless to say, heartbreaking and emotionally devastating. It almost happened again today. Something needs to be done with the brook behind Meadow Brook Lane. All the storm drains for Hamiltonian Park funnel into the brook. I was told it was planned that way. Well, this plan and this way no longer works for those of us who live along the brook. So please, do something to fix it. We can't live like this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Someone else?
Sharon Conant, I'm sure you're all aware of the name, the address is 14 Meadow Brook. For three and a half years, I have suffered with flooding from the front, which collapsed my foundation in LA. Now I'm flooding from the back. Something has to be done with the brook. Legally, you're trespassing on my property. Inverse condemnation, I believe it's called. Now, to re, in your recap of the last 24 hours, you mentioned sewage. Was that raw sewage in Hamiltonian Park?
Talk about the village in our basements here. There's probably sewage in the, yes, in Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills at the pump stations.
So raw sewage?
Yes.
Something needs to be done. When Myron Urbanski was the town supervisor, a few of us in Meadow Brook complained about water rats. He came out with a little machine and they dredged the brook. Then shortly thereafter, the town made the pond at the end a skating rink. I'm now told this belongs to the DEC. What does it belong to?
It belongs to the town. The DEC regulates it.
So they say we can, is that who we contact to dredge it?
Well, if the decision is made to dredge it, if someone makes a conscious decision to dredge it, we would have to have their permission to do that.
Their permission. Because you're going from a little tiny brook, it almost washed away the wooden brook, the bridge that leads over to the park, then you're going into this huge 50-foot area that's filled with reeds, trees, garbage, onion bags. We saw them today, onion bags. Two people in the park built bridges over by Lower Magic Circle to go across the brook. Those bridges are no longer there. Could they possibly be jamming it up? Because it just keeps backing up. With a four-foot fence, all you saw was the black pipe on the top of the fence from the hurricane, four feet of water. And as it came down Meadow Brook from Craigville, it got to be less and less. So there was a jam, maybe from the tornado? There's a log, there's a jam someplace. All we ask is somebody go out, check it out, see what's happening over on Palesian. If you go to Coleman Road, no debris. We have it all. And like I said, three and a half years from the front, my flooding today in my basement again was not from the brook, was from the front. And now I have water in my basement, which you may all know, I just redid three years ago. I have no sheet rock, I have no carpeting, I have no furniture, I have no refrigerator, I have no TV. Again, I'm tired of it. I'm really tired of it. From the front, from the back, sleepless nights, you hear a raindrop, up Roger and IR, flashlights, video, this, that. I have more videos of the town flooding than my grandchildren. Something has to be done. We're working on the front, now something has to be done on the back. That's all I have to say, I'm tired of it.
Thank you.
Kathleen Metrovic, 8 Meadow Brook Lane. I must say that I'm very disappointed in the town. There is something that's definitely blocking that creek. I called the DEC, the DEC told me that they oversee the stream, but the town is responsible to take care of it. I don't know if the town has contacted the DEC to speak to them, to try to fix the issue, to try to fix the problem. All I know is that the town trees that are on that creek that fell over from winds and other storms, or whatever the case may be, is blocking the stream and backing up the water. I lost over $15,000 worth of things in my basement. Not only personal belongings, but I had a fully finished basement, which needed to be partially gutted. I really don't think that's fair. I've got excuses that, let's see, we don't have the resources, we don't have the manpower, I've got excuses that, let's see, we don't have the resources, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the time, we have more important things to do. What is more important than the residents of this town, okay, who helped elect you and pay the salaries of the people who work here? I don't want to hear it anymore. It's very heartbreaking. I take care of my house. If I didn't take care of my house, and it looked like crap, I'm sure somebody would be at my front door knocking, giving me a fine. Okay? I'm proud of my house. I don't want to have to live like this. This morning, my husband and I arrived at four-thirty in the morning, my house almost flooded again. Something needs to be done. Something needs to be done. The garbage needs to be removed from it. I have photos, I can bring them, I can show them to you, where the stream is blocked, what's causing the blockage, and everything else that goes along with it. I went up to the corner of Fleetwood and looked at the stream up there where the little substation houses, and lo and behold, that whole area is pristine clean. Not one piece of crap, not one tree, not one branch. The stream, to the side, all skated out nice and neatly. If that section was done, somebody must have did it. Why can't the other section be done? My house is the first house to get flooded, and I get the most water. And I really don't think it's fair. I take taxes in this town, and I deserve to be treated decently. Something needs to be done with that stream. And not to mention the fact that the substation sewer plant, which is right next to the ball field, when that ball field gets flooded and my house gets flooded, that sewerage goes into the ball field and backs up into my yard and my neighbor's yard and the next person's yard. And I doubt very much that that is healthy for anybody. I have asthma, my daughter has asthma, I also have other conditions. I can't live like this. Something needs to be done. If you need to contact the DEC, because they oversee the issue, then somebody needs to contact the DEC. I don't want to hear that there's no funds, I'm tired of hearing excuses, I'm tired of you putting off, I'm tired of everybody passing the buck. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be taken care of. And yes, on my rate, because you know what, I almost got flooded again today. And I had to take a day off of work, and my husband had to take a day off of work, because we were nervous that our households were gonna get flooded. So not only did we lose everything in our basement, but we both lost a day's pets. And I really don't think that's fair. We don't have sound peace of mind. We have nothing that was shown to us, or nobody that helped us, or approached us, or offered anything to us. Okay? That we need to believe that we can have a peace of mind, that Goshen is the place to live, and it's really good, and they're out for their residents and all that. We don't see that in our development at all whatsoever. The stream needs to be dredged, needs to be cleaned, even if you can't dredge it, at least maybe somebody could pick up the sticks and twigs that are in the stream to clear it out. Because if it rains again, guess what? It's gonna get flooded again, and my basement's gonna get flooded again. And I really don't think that's fair, because I think any of you people sitting up there, if it was your house, you would have a different attitude.
Okay, thank you. Any others come? John?
I'm sorry, I have to say something, sitting in the audience. First of all, I live on Coleman Road, and you're mistaken. The road was flooded. And it flooded, I've grown up in Goshen, that road gets flooded, I can't, I used to swim my horses in that stream when it flooded. And you, I'm sorry. My name is Susan Cleaver. My family farm is Banbury Cross Farm on Coleman Road. I'm also a reporter. I also sit on the environmental review board and the planning board, just so you all know. I was out that day for both storms. One was, I went to the night to town, because I was looking at infrastructure damage and trying to photograph it. And yes, I did go out to Hamiltonian Park, I think I talked, stopped at your house. Well, one of the houses I stopped at, I got pictures of the water that was almost up to that walkway, I got pictures of the culvert, the culvert was open, a couple of feet, it did not go to the top of the culvert, or seemed to be plugged or anything through that culvert. It was flooded all the way through Silesia Park, it was flooded over the road to Coleman Road, and was flooded, my family farm's property was underwater. Would you like to see pictures? Because I went out that day, and I took pictures, and Coleman Road was not flooded. Well, I have a million pictures. Believe me. Well, I'm sorry, I just, there is, there definitely, that stream does flood, and there is a problem. And to try and, and I feel sorry for anybody that goes through flooding. I was amazed at the work that the, that the town, the DPW, the police, and everybody did. The reason I actually, one of the things I wanted to ask the board was, one thing I noticed was, a lot of people seem to go around barriers, like they're not even there. I was, you know, live wires, trees down, and it just seems that people just, they don't even think about it. They just, I don't know the thing they get up, but is, is there any way the board can look at either increasing fines or something?
We've given several citation tickets, where people have gone around the barriers. In fact, one person went around the barrier, car had to be towed out. So it, it's being done, but you can't be at every location the whole time. But yes, we were working overtime in police to do this, so it...
Yeah.
Okay.
That was one thing, and I also wanted to commend the departments and all the work they did. I was just, I had no idea, I had, I really, it was an eye-opener for me, because I had no idea what... Doug, I saw you out there, I saw everybody out there, I was just amazed. And one of the people had commented about FEMA and that stream. I'd be more than happy, and I, matter of fact, I think when Honey Bernstein was supervisor, we did sit down with FEMA, because that section of the park in Hamiltonian Park has never been mapped, to my knowledge. It's mapped afterwards as a floodway and a floodplain, it's mapped before as a floodplain and a floodway. And how they managed to miss the park in Hamiltonian Park, I still don't understand. And we asked them to please come in and remap that when Honey was here. However, they remapped everything and left that out again. So it definitely is a problem.
Good.
So, but I'd be willing to help if there's anything I can do.
Okay, thanks. John?
Hi, my name is Alexander John Petrovic, eight Meadow Brook Lane. I'd like to commend the DPW for not calling me back, not returning no phone calls. I spoke to Mark today by the pump station, I said, can you please have your supervisor come out? He tried to call him, he didn't, he said he couldn't make it. I left my name and number, still haven't got a phone call. I spoke to Neil, well, I didn't speak to Neil, I came here last Monday, and never got a phone call back. Called Wednesday, never got a phone call back. I came Friday, and I spoke to him in the office, and basically, no one knows how to return phone calls around here. And like everyone else, we're sick and tired of it. We came up here, and to be honest with you, I'm disgusted with this town. I basically, I'm gonna get my house fixed and sell it, get the heck out of this town. Because I ain't giving it one more dollar to this town, because all our stuff is destroyed. We lost stuff from our first daughter, who passed away, and now it's all gone. Can't, you can't get that stuff back. Regarding the creek, I was up to my waders today, up there, moving debris, trying to get it down. The creek is getting backed up where the ball field is, where there's bleachers, because it's creating like a dam, and it's protruding out, and then up along our property, and a few houses up, and then comes back in. Now, when I looked at the big tube that goes underneath Craigville, it was only a third fill. So that's not the problem, it's backing up before that bridge. And something needs to be done. I have all that garbage outside the front of my house, I don't have a pickup truck. Yeah, I keep hearing, yeah, we waived the fines, we waived the fines. You can go dump it, or I'm gonna put it in my back of my car, in my trunk? I work for a municipality in New Jersey, I'm an equipment operator. We removed fifty tons of garbage to the transfer station yesterday. My boss says, get the receipts, we're submitting them to FEMA, and also, we're submitting them in to state aid. I don't understand why Goshen can't do that. I'm tired of hearing, well, we got people who are old, retired, this and that. Instead of having a spring cleanup, have an emergency fall cleanup for the people who are flooded. Other towns are doing it, but no, Goshen can't do it. It's ridiculous. Like, no one's helping no one here. And then I hear, then from Neil, well, your basement is not on the thing saying it's finished. I said, yes, it is, my taxes are paying for a finished basement. And I believe you said also. I said, yes, it is. I have thirty-five-hundred square foot house, twenty-eight-hundred square foot upstairs, seven-hundred foot downstairs. It's destroyed. So instead of helping me, they're like, well, we're gonna have to reassess your house. I tell you what, I've got the whole basement, then I'll have you come back and lower my taxes. Because you know what? I don't care. So something needs to be done. And I don't care if that garbage stays out there for a year, I don't care if you find me, take me to court, I don't care. Lock me up, I'm had it. And along with the other people, we all had it. I mean, no one's helped. I have a storm drain that comes down between eight Meadow Brook and ten Meadow Brook, which Neil approved it years ago, when, I guess, when the house was built. Now I have water coming from the street into my backyard.
Into the stream?
Into the stream. And that pipe doesn't go all the way to the stream, and it goes about two-thirds into my yard. So not... And it's ridiculous with the water and the sewer. What's our bill gonna be next year? They say, I spoke to you the other day, you said, well, the meter at the end of the year was gonna be eight hundred, a thousand dollars? I should only be paying for the sewer, according to my meter, what comes in the house, and what go, that's why I should be paying what goes out. It's not my problem that the lines are cracked in the middle of the road. I spoke to you, I said, we had the same problem in Bergen County. Company came in and sleeved the whole sewer line. You don't have to dig up the streets.
They don't have the money for that or the resources.
We have an intermissible agreement with the village, it's been since the early fifties, on how we're, we are billed on sewage, not on water. That's a longstanding, since that subdivision was built. When your subdivision was built, it had its own sewer plant, and failed, a year or two after the subdivision was built. The builder and the town worked with the village to set up a system where the village would take your sewage. Back in those days, they, I don't know if they didn't have water meters or whatever it was, but the system that they put in in about nineteen sixty, sixty-one, was all the sewage that comes from Hamiltonian Park is based on it going through one valve and one meter that goes to the village, and the village charges accordingly. Every gallon of sewage, whether it's got water in it or sewage in it, is billed accordingly. Okay? We get that bill in January, and then we split that up based on your water usage. That's how it's been for sixty years. Now, we've challenged the village, and we've been in arbitration for two years, three years, for two thousand eight and two thousand nine bills, where we did not pay what they asked us to pay. And so they sued us, and then we went to arbitration. That should be resolved in the next little bit. But it's, that's a system that is in place. We're hoping, in fact, to create another intermissible agreement with it, where it may be on another issue, another basis. But what it is, is what it is. And the reason why your bills are so high, in addition to the water we're putting in the system is, and being based on sewage, is the village built a thirty-million-dollar sewer plant. And everybody who's connected has to pay for part of that, whether it be the village, or Arcadia Hills, or Hamiltonian Park. And so your, the percentage-wise of your bills is going up astronomically. And that's, and we've discussed this here in this, in this room, with residents, every year, every April since I've been here in two thousand six, a lot of special meetings. So it is, the information's been out there, you know, it is, but it's not a good situation. I shared that with you. It is not a good situation. If we had the money, we'd build a new plant of our own, and that, just don't think it'd be cost-effective for a hundred and forty-five homes. So that's, that's where we're at.
So then next year, we could be paying nine hundred dollars a quarter?
I wouldn't conjecture what next year is going to be.
But who, who actually looks at this meter? I could put, I mean...
We, we read it every day. We read it every day, and we record it. And at the end of the year, we give all those readings to the village.
Well, I have a question then. The stream that goes behind our house, and all the sewage that, the, the drain in the street that go into that stream, so we all get, where does that stream come from? Does it come from the village that goes behind our house and down?
Well, glad you asked.
Because if it does, let me just finish, please. Because if it does come from the village, and it comes down in our streams and in everywhere else, that means that we're paying for water that technically is not our water, because it's coming from other places and going into our sewerage, into our drain system, and into the stream, and processing through Hamiltonian Park's water. So where does that stream come from?
Go share where the water comes from and why you have the floods. If you look at the FEMA maps, the flood maps that were put together in two thousand nine, if someone mentioned, there's, if you take, if you look, where does that water come from? The water that going through behind your house emanates from miles away.
So all that water's coming down?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It mostly, the majority of the water that comes to your home, behind your home, comes from Goshen Hills. There's a, an area up there, they, they call it a, like I wrote down here, a watershed. And watershed is where all the water comes down to a low point, goes in the lakes, ponds, streams, and whatever. The water that, that we're talking about, this eleven inches of rain the other night, all that rain came down, was from acres and acres and acres of land up there, whether it be farmland, road, roofs, decks, sidewalks, or whatever it is, all that water came down. It got in the streams, and it came into the stream behind your house. But before it got to your house, it flooded out, Hareman Drive, for two days. The water continued, it went across Route seventeen, flooded it for two days. It went across seventeen M, flooded it for two days. It made over the top of the old Chester Road, went on down that stream, it overflowed the banks behind your house, and went into your house, and all over the fields. Went under the culvert, went into the Silesia property, and the swamp back in there, it over, it went over the Coleman Roach. And it finally makes its way to the Honor Hill, and into the Hudson River, and it's gone. But that water started two or three or four miles away, and came from dozens of acres. There were tens of thousands of cubic yards of water came down there. This was an abnormal event. This is not just your heavy-duty rain. This was an abnormal event, that, I'm sorry it happened, I'm sorry it happened again today. All you have to do is read the papers, and it says, this is the worst flood we've had in decades, if not millenniums. This was a big deal. I grew up in Goshen, and I never saw anything like this. Nothing like this. So there's a lot of water, it's impacted lots of people. And you know, we, we have friends and people that come to these meetings, their houses are underwater. Now, the other thing is, Susan was talking about the flood maps. At the end of your subdivision below, below, is a floodplain. You go up the other end of your street, it's a floodplain. One of them is three hundred and ninety-three feet, the one below is three hundred and ninety feet. Differential three feet. That goes through that channel you're talking about, the stream behind your house. Goes from a high spot to the low spot. When it overflows the bank based on volume, your street, your street really, if it's re-coated or whatever, will go from what they call an X area to a floodplain. You are literally adjacent to two floodplains, and your elevation's then a whole lot different. Why they didn't do that when they did it in two thousand, it says right on the map, not math. I think they didn't, did that deference so that you wouldn't have to pay the higher, if you wanted flood insurance, you wouldn't have to pay the higher rate? I don't know. But you were at the lowest spot in Hamiltonian Park, all the water from the village through the Hamiltonian Park goes down, it comes from Goshen Hills down. It's a tremendous amount of water.
So we're paying for that water though?
It is groundwater, it is groundwater, it is snow water.
Right, but if it goes down and through our drains and everything, we're paying for that water in our sewer, or our water bill?
No, 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 it's nothing to, it's storm water. It's not drinking, it's not potable water, it's storm water. Now, all the drains in Hamiltonian Park, when they built it, you're talking about stormwater drains, they come right by your house into that creek, because you're the lowest spot. To do otherwise, you'd have to pump the water somewhere. And that's just how the place was built. I think today, today, they may not have been allowed to build there.
So basically, so that's the way it's gotta be then, so...
No, I'm saying that's the way it is. I don't know if there's anything we can do. We're gonna hear what you've got to say tonight, and we're gonna sit and think about it, just talk about it, and see what we can do.
I have a dispute appointment, Neil, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
The fact is that, we've been saying for weeks, that the water has been backing up more than usual on our lawns, and we've been asking for weeks and months and over a year, telling people, this water's backing up, if we get a big rain, we're gonna get... If we get a big rain, we're gonna get flooded out." And we've told them over and over, and it's gone ignored and ignored. Guaranteed, the hurricane came and brought a lot of rain, okay? But this issue has been going on for a long time, and it's not just because we had a hurricane. The water has been getting higher and higher gradually over a period of time. And I don't know, but from my point of view, if there was, if there's trees across the stream and the town, you could at least remove the trees that are blocking the stream. I mean, I see at the other end, it's done. So, I mean, you could at least have the courtesy of just at least removing the stuff that's there so that the water can at least flow a little better under normal rain, then that water wouldn't come up like that.
Well, we're hearing what you're saying, we'll take it under advisement. Uh, we'll look and see what we can do, if anything.
So, in other words, you're not gonna do it, and that's what it comes down to, because that's what we've been hearing for the past months and years.
Can I ask you a question? How come, um, when I spoke to, uh, Mr. Noel a month ago, and Mark, I don't know his last name, he works, he works for, I guess, the Water and Sewer. I asked him, "How many years you been working here?" He says, "Nine." I said, "Did you ever see this ball field that's flooded like that?" He says, "Never." And I said, and that was under normal rain. We only had like maybe two inches of rain. And I said to him, "Is it a possibility you could come down to backhoe and just reliefs or make channels? 'Cause, yeah, the parks off, is all, the banks on the park side are high, and the banks on our side are low. So, yeah, let's save the park, but let's flood out all the people, our four homes." And I said to him, um, "Can you do any, I don't have the manpower or the resources to do it." And then, I spoke, he don't return my call. My wife called the highway department this morning and said, "Listen, we're taking on water. Can you please go check it down there? Maybe something's blocking it." Well, we're not calling no one in to seven, we're not calling in for overtime. So, this lady said, "They've been working sixteen hours, let's commend them." But now, when we called, they're not bringing no one in to seven-thirty. Then I called seven-thirty, it's no answer. So, then I went to the police department, town, the, um, town police, there was no one there. So, I picked up the phone and got dispatcher, told them what was going on, said what I had to say, and then they called me back and made a report out. I mean, is that any way how to, to treat, we're not calling in for overtime? So, let's, let's flood everybody out, got, maybe you could put like a pump or something down there? Or just see, have someone come down and see, "Oh gee, it's filling up by, by, by the, um, bluff field." So, let's maybe move this bleacher and get a backhoe in there, and like move some of this debris out, 'cause it's ponding up, it's acting like a dam, and, and just like spread, spread, spreads. I had two pumps going this morning, thank God, or I would have had water again.
Well, I got called by him at seven-fifteen, giving me a status update. If people start work at seven o'clock, I don't know what time he got to work to find out what was going on. Uh, but I do know that, that, yeah, don't put me there, ten people, ten people in our highway department, who, their, their mission, by the way, is road making. We've never said to them, "You've got to take care of all the wetlands, and all the flood plains, and all the other things that are in the town of Goshen, 'cause we have miles and miles and miles of them." Now, we're gonna look at this situation, we're gonna talk about it, figure out if there's anything we can do. But, but I know that Mr. Noel this morning was consumed with roads that were closed due to flooding and erosion in a school week, and that was his priority this morning. I mean, I just know that. And if he didn't return your, I went to your home today with Neil.
Yeah, well, I, I, unfortunately, I was at, when you guys came, 'cause I got his card, I was at Lowe's getting another pump.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we did go out there.
I seen his card on my door, but I didn't know you actually both used to camp.
We've been to your home twice, we went today, and we went the other day.
The other day I was working.
Right. But this, and, and, you know, but the fact I'm saying is, is that Mr. Noel, his school opened this week, he is, everything that he did last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday was undone today. He's got days worth of work now to go back out and fix what was broken. And so, I'm sure that he didn't have a chance to call you. I wanted to come out and see your, your story.
Let me ask you something. We have two DPWs, two police stations, police departments. Don't you guys work hand in hand? If you're sure, if you're sure, if you're sure, like manpower, saying, "Listen, we can't handle it." Call the, the county to help out? 'Cause they, you said they, just do the streets? Well, maybe the county can help out on the creeks, or the village can help out. I mean, I would think you guys work hand in hand, you know, like shared services?
Well, we do share services. The water sewer department, the two people we have there work full-time now for the highway. Everybody was busy, I'm sharing with, everybody was busy. And, and, truly, I, I feel your pain and, and what you've gone through. I think it's dreadful, you went through this. If there's something we can do, we will do it. We will talk about it, we will have Mr. Noel look at it, we may even have our, we have wonderful, we'll have our wonderful engineer, he'll have him look at it. But I, we can't make any promises. I know this, and I, I need to share it with you. A year ago, we had a river expert, doctor's degree in riverology, there is such a thing, who came to town because the, the, the Black Earth farmers were constantly being flooded out, and due to Walhalla going over its bank. And we, and, and so, they put in place a program with the DPC, and it was really difficult to put in. Lots of meetings and the whole nine yards. The county went out, saw trees down, did all kinds of things in the Walhalla River basin. This storm came, it went, this storm was worse than the one that back in two thousand. It didn't do a whole lot. And what this guy said, this, this doctor of riverology, he said truly, "When the water comes, what appears to be common sense goes out the window." Water, it, it's very fluid, goes round, under, over, the whole nine yards. But, we will look at this. If there's something we can do, we will do it. I feel very badly this occurred. You live at a low level within Hamiltonian Park, and also at the town. This was, this storm was two hundred and twenty-five percent bigger than the one-hundred-year standard storm that we use to design our roads and our bridges and our culverts. This was, this was a big deal, okay? And the village tonight, same places are flooded down in the village, uh, is everywhere. And as, again, as I spoke earlier tonight, as we speak, there are a hundred thousand people in the state of New York and Pennsylvania being mandatory evacuation due to the rain that we had this morning. And evidently, they're still hanging this afternoon.
And they're coming tomorrow morning.
And I guess they're coming, so it's not over, and, and, but anyway.
Thank you.
I appreciate your, your honesty and your, and your, your coming.
Please.
I don't think you're getting it, this is not just because of Hurricane Ivy.
Yes, I, I do get it.
This goes back, we can have four inches, and mainly, John and Janet, they fought. Justin will get a little bit. Now, in May or June, when Broderick was out to my house to replace the storm drain, which doesn't work, by the way, um, he, we spoke to him, and Tulip spoke to him, John has spoke to him, and said, "We need to address the brook." Broderick's answer was, "We have talked about it, Sharon, we'll get on it." This is September. I understand, so there was no hurricanes between June and now? I don't know. I know you only have ten men, there's seventy-five square miles that we have to cover, I understand that.
Right.
But this is not new. It's not new. It's never flooded this bad, but it's not new. I, like I said, Myron did it. I don't understand. And, no, and Mr. Tulip, my other neighbor, he's called Sev Wilk Times to Broderick, and he's got no response.
We will look at this, we'll see if.
I hope so. And I'm headed up north for a wedding for my son, with this on my mind, thanks. To Hunter, so who knows if that's even there on Saturday?
Sorry. Hi, uh, my name is Justin Ackland, I'm at Twelve Meadow Brook Lane, right in between all these folks. Uh, we've only owned the home there for seven years, my wife and I, but I've lived there since I was one year old. We bought the home from my mother. Uh, I, I feel that you are, are hearing us, I appreciate what you're saying about looking into it and seeing what you can do. I just want to reiterate what a lot of my neighbors have said, which is, "We're not asking you guys to prevent hurricanes or unprecedented floods or anything like that." But in the time that we've lived there, in the time that I've lived there, I've seen the, uh, situation in our backyards go from very seldom flooding, you know, barely any flooding, to, especially in the past few years, the water levels encroaching and encroaching further and further. It's clear that something is changing or something needs to be addressed. Uh, when the brook was widened, and they made that pond, and the pond overgrew and turned into, you know, a, a swampland there, yeah. I, I, I'm not a riverologist, but, you know, having seen that evolution, and having seen the evolution of the flood, floods coming in, if, yeah, all we're asking is, please do look into it, please, you, just see if there's anything, because it certainly seems like there's something, and, yeah, we're, we're all afraid whenever, whenever it rains now.
I certainly understand, but thank you for your coming. Dan?
Um, I just wanted to throw a couple of cents in here. I, I'm not a river expert either. Uh, I took a look out at their place. I don't know how much of a difference it would have made, you know, with the hurricane, the way the water came down, but I think it might help if some of the debris was taken out and maybe give them a little, a little relief with the water coming over the banks. The other thing I wanted to say was that, at, at his house, the storm drain ends in his yard. It goes from the street and empties into his backyard. Now, to me, it just didn't look right, I don't know if that's colored a lot, but.
I copied that down, I would have, we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Gary?
I also was a veteran of Hamiltonian Park, it was the first home that I had ever purchased. My basement flooded all the time. The water would come down from across the street. The Culligans had lived there during those years. It would come down, go through my house, go through my yard, and into the Melville's yard, and then, some way, dissipate it. And the brook, the brook.
Our Melville's house.
Oh, you own Melville's house? Well, there you go, I'll, I'll testify for you. I, I think what we're, what we're looking at here, I want to choose my words carefully, unforeseen engineering and planning. And I think what we have seen now brings us to another point. We now have four to five major housing developments that are being planned with some desire packaged sewers. I think this sends a message to us, that perhaps the planning board and the engineers should use this as a precedent-setting situation when they're gonna do their sewers, that we don't have overflows of toilet paper coming up in people's houses and the, in the streets of the village of Goshen. There's more than development, and maybe this is a blessing in disguise, what's happened here. But, I live on a moat now, and, um, somebody who's mentioned the flow, maybe it was you, Doug. You look, I've lived, I don't know, ten, fifteen years on the Otter Kill, and I've been fighting for the Otter Kill, for that river to be left alone. It now looks like the Amazon. It's a raging river. Not only are we picking up overflow from up in the hills, we're also picking it up from the Black Meadow. So, we're picking up masses amounts of water out of Chester, the town of Chester, and the village of Chester. So, there's a lot here, I think, to be looked at in, in retrospect. But, I would like to mention the police department. There's been a lot of conversation with the police department to cut it back, there's, there's, uh, budgetary situations. I've been in the cops and robbers business for over thirty years.
On which side?
All the pencil was talking to me, pal. Back on your camera, will you, please? And we have a good police department, we have a good chief. I worked for them for years, Danny Marsh. The biggest problem with the police department and politicians is that they, the police department can be a real political liability when it goes bad, when there's corruption. You don't have any of that on the Chief Marsh. I can't say the same for some other situations that we've had in this town. Those guys were out twenty-four-seven. Somebody mentioned, uh, Seventeen M. They were there. The other night, I'm laying in bed at one o'clock in the morning, all of a sudden, here, crash! There's lights going, I thought it was the mothership. I told my wife, "Get up, get dressed, they're here for us, we'll get the hell out of here." The cop, I, I called the police department like that, they were there. You'll never get that with the state police, now, it's with the state police. They're not gonna give you that response. So, I think we have to really think about this police department and what is there. I lost my front license plate. Next morning, Danny Marsh calls me up, he says, "I got your plate." What, what'd he call it? Oh, the first thing that came into my head was, "Oh, crip, where was I?" But, I mean, that was great, you know, I had one of those vanity plates.
Sure.
But, uh. I think we have to really think about the PD and, and the DPW, I mean, they were out there. Doug had a live wire laying across Craigville Road. I'm sitting on like front porch watching these morons going around the barrier, guys on motorcycles, bicycles, how come these people are nuts? And then finally, I mean, the cops were there, they pulled them all over, giving them solaces or whatever. Thank you.
Gary, one of the things that you mentioned, which is stormwater management for new subdivisions in New York in the last, say, two or three years, come up with much different regulations on stormwater management. So, all the new subdivisions have to have retention ponds. If you go out to Eva, which is the Alphines, you'll see there's a great big hole in the ground where all the stormwater goes, so it doesn't go in people's backyards, front yards, or whatever. Same on the wooden estates across the road. And, and the regulations today, Hamiltonian Park, Arcadia Hills will not be built like they are, uh, for the very reasons that we've got today.
How do those retention ponds fare?
What, they, they fare very well, they, uh, I looked at, checked them both out, and they're, they're partially full, but what they're supposed to do is retain the water and release it gradually into the streams and other things, if they overflow. They're not near the top. But this is the kind of thing that's going on. Now, I can't speak for what's going on in the village or town of Chester, uh, and what they're doing in the Black Meadow or whatever. But, the fellow standing next to you, he owns a lot of land by Seventeen M. And when he and I were kids, okay, there was no water there. And now, there's water there all the time. Go to the old mile track. It used to be a racetrack, and now it's a lake year-round. Now, what's going on? Well, a couple of things. Number one, we're getting a lot more rain than we did, a lot more rain, okay? But we're having a lot more runoff from construction and roads and all the other things that go on in our communities, and adjacent communities. It's just there and it's coming. And this is the kind of thing that will have to be managed so that private individuals don't suffer. But the fact is, that the, when, when Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills were built so many years ago, they didn't have any of these regulations. And as a consequence, life goes on without them, and so, if we were so, but this is what this board's gonna have to look at.
Well, now, when I first looked at Hamiltonian Park, I was in the house three days, I didn't have twenty cents. My whole sewer system collapsed because it was orange-burg.
Right, certainly.
And I had to have it replaced, I had to borrow money from people. And my basement in Hamiltonian, you know, was like a goldfish pond. All those houses across from me, I was at fourteen, the Culligan's house, Gudgerbier, all of those houses got immense amount of water.
Now, one thing, if you talk about sewage and the cost and whatnot, uh, back about a year and a half, two years ago, we put in for five point two million dollars of stimulus money for Hamiltonian Park and Arcadia Hills to replace all your sewer systems, because your sewer systems are decayed, absolutely decayed. That's why all the water's getting in them. And we were turned down. Uh, for Hamiltonian Park, we're working now with another builder, who is gonna, and we had a public hearing on this, to give us money to work on.
a public hearing on this, to give us money to work on replacing pipes and so forth that you would otherwise have to pay for. They're intimately involved in this, and we had a couple of public hearings on it. And the fact is, is that I think we're making progress, but it's slow. But your systems will have to be, your water system is in good shape at last, but the sewer system is deep, total replacement. And so we're going to have to do that at some point in time, and we've got to balance taxes, money, et cetera. Okay, Dan?
He made a good suggestion about putting...
It didn't work.
And the other thing, as I spoke to you earlier, if you could discuss another sewage plant and get us out of the village, you know, out from under the dome, you know, I mean...
Right. Okay. Good, thank you. All right, folks, does anybody else got any?
Yeah, I want to jump in on this, because I heard a lot of stuff tonight, and thought it was disturbing, but I was out there, right after the height of the storm, I went out to see, Doug sent me on out. Matter of fact, it was right after the emergency phone call into Orange County. Doug was on top of this every minute, every hour for days. I went out there, I, I feel your pain, I went home, my pond came up seven feet to my basement, and my memories are all gone too. So it's not a personal story. I just want to make clear so you know, this board does never gives lip service to anyone. If Doug said, we're going to do it, instead of it done, go home with that peace of mind. It won't be swept under the rug, it won't be forgotten. I'm sorry that it took me a year or two years for us to get at, under a disaster situation, but go home tonight knowing that everybody on this board will be on top of this issue tomorrow morning, and we will have results and answers to your questions as fast as you can, you really possible.
Doug, just, just for these people, I want to just echo what Kenny said, a couple guys, you know, because I've been working with these guys for the last few years, and he's exactly right. They're looking for it.
That's fine, but it just seems like when we call or when we have questions, and I know you're busy, and I know you have other things, but we just don't like to hear, we're paying taxes and we're, we do what we need to do. It's not fair for us to hear, you don't have the time, we don't have the resources, we don't have the equipment, we can't do it.
Now, you've heard that from him. You didn't hear that from him.
Not from you personally, I'm just saying in general, from, from different DPW workers and different people. And so with that in our heads, and we've been told it a few times, it's hard for us to trust anybody, because that's, that's what we have. As you know, people don't remember the good things as much as they remember the bad things. So when you hear those things, it's embedded in our head. Now tomorrow we're supposed to get more rain, and now I'm going to be up all night waiting for this rain, thinking I'm going to get flooded out. And I understand what you're saying, and you're saying that you're going to, you're going to see what you can do.
Well, we're going to look at, see what we can do, and, and, and whatever. Okay. Anybody else got anything they'd like to say?
Doug, I, I, I spoke to you, I, I spoke to you before the meeting and said I wanted to say something tonight, not knowing this was going to come up, and, and it relates, I'd like to go from the very specific to, to something a little more conceptual, but it very much ties in. In the last couple of years, we've heard many times that we are one community, two municipalities but one community. As you know, I've hammered relentlessly on the village side and brought it up here a couple of times, talking about the Mile Track, where we, we do own some property adjacent to it, a small amount, not a large amount. And talking about how that situation has been deteriorating to the ultimate detriment of the village and, I believe, the town. We had a significant storm, historically not an outlier, a large storm, we'll have another one someday. But what is different this time is that that 100 acres out there owned by Mr. Sakman used to serve as a buffer, a hydrological buffer for the village. The flows, as you said, come down from Goshen Hills and were stored there during heavy periods of inundation like this, and it would give some relief to the flooding in the village. That situation, through a complex web of, of factors, has deteriorated, so it's no longer a retention basin. It's saturated, it's a saturated sponge. It can't absorb these inundations, and as a result, you have the flooding in the village, you also have the Rio, which desperately needs to be dredged and is backed up, so there's no place for the water to go. Instead of draining out of the village, it heads out to these people's area out there, which is low. And the point that I've tried to make, where I say it's conceptual rather than, than specific, is that we are one community, and if the village goes down, it's going to drag the town with it. When I was out photographing recently, both before and after the storm, and then after last night's rains, today, I was struck by just how shabby the core village looks. And seeing this adjacent to the flooding and the backup of the Rio, it became very apparent as though it was in neon lights, nobody is going to invest in this village, nobody's going to create ratables, while the infrastructure is in the state of disrepair that it's in. This goes back to the Orangeburg pipe sewer system that pertains through most of the village, as, as well as the developments in the town. It, it pertains to, to the, the Rio flooding and the village's inability and unwillingness to address the Sakman property. Now, when, I'm trying to think of her name, Maureen Hallahan?
Maureen Hallahan.
Hallahan was here from the Orange Partnership. There was a woman from the state who, who said very clearly, anything you intend to do in terms of economic development would be much better received by the funding entities if it's done cooperatively by the municipalities. You are the town and you deal with what's in front of you as the town. Village matters are the village matter, but I urge you to stretch and go beyond those boundaries and try to get together with the village to act on this. If the village goes down, it's going to drag the town with it. If ratables are destroyed in the village, it affects the town as well. So the Rio desperately needs to be addressed. I was out there looking at it today. There's a backup in, in the drainage from approximately where Quattrini has done his work at Canal and Grand Street, all the way back to Finance Pond. If that were relieved, the Rio does flow, if that were relieved, a lot of the flooding in the village would be ameliorated. If, if the situation with the track were ameliorated, a lot of the flooding would go away, and, and then maybe we could develop some ratables in the core village that would help everybody out.
Did you, did you talk to the village board, what you'd say, or?
There has, there, there.
Because they control the whole thing.
There has not been a meeting since Irene. However, I have hammered almost weekly, back when Bob Weimberger was sitting there, and, and ever since, I have repeatedly asked the village board to address this, the Mile Track situation, and every time I ask about the Green Street Drainage Project or about the Rio, I basically get smoke blown up my posterior.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What does that mean?
Okay, would similar like the Lake of Motion, we go in executive session with the intent not to return, to discuss the status of the C S E A negotiation, and discuss the current status of the sewer arbitration and the new I M A, potential new I M A, discuss PD personnel issue, discuss town hall personnel issue.
Oh, well. Second.
All affairs, aye?
Aye.
Folks, thank you very much for coming.